I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. The future board meetings, our next board meeting on March 8th will be at 5:00 instead of 6:00 to accommodate the awards that we usually do in the first meeting of March. March 22nd at 6:00 PM, and then in April, we're already going to meet on the 26th. That's also at 6:00 PM. Revision of agenda, we have a couple under HR and one under recognition, and we'll get right to the recognition. Public recognition, we have a recommendation to approve a $500 donation from Zoomers RV of Indiana for Sharp Creek Robotics Program. And that's it on, sorry?
Go ahead.
I said, and that's it on the donations.
I'm going to accept the donation.
Let's look at that.
Motion to second to approve the donation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
School recognition, Mr. Snyder.
Can I, how about if I go first?
Sure.
And then I'll let Mr. Snyder do his, and we'll do our main event with our spotlight tonight. So, I have quite a few, and I don't know if I'll read every single name, but if I do, I apologize if I mispronounce some of them. But we'll start out Southwood. We'd like to recognize Benjamin Rotovish, 2019 Southwood graduate, for being named to the president's list for the fall 2021 term at Trinity University. Rotovish is majoring in computer science and information technology to earn president's list honors. Trinity University students must complete a minimum of 12 hours and have a grade point average of 3.75 to 4.0. So way to go, Ben. And from Ms. Need at Southwood, congratulations to the students listed below for making the 2022 Wabash County Honors Band. These students will perform at the Honeywell Center in the Ford Theater on March, Friday, March 11th at 7:30 PM alongside other selected students from Northfield, Wabash, and Manchester. Please make sure you congratulate them when you see them in the hallways and class. And I won't read all those at this time, but we do make these, they go to the media, and they will print all those out. Also, I will go to Southwood, is very proud announced that Xavier Miller, 2021 Southwood graduate, recently successfully completed his field training exercise and received his cross rifles from the Army. Way to go Xavier. And then from Ms. Need, also along the list, a successful day at the vocal, vocal solo and ensemble district contest. The students did a great job representing Southwood Junior Senior High very well. If you see any students listed below in the class or the hallways, please make sure you congratulate them. We ended up with 14 golds and three silvers. So I will read the ones that earned the gold here. Emma Adams, Sylvia Baycorn, there we go, Brenley Galvin, Jordan Partline, Fritz Kirk, Emily Lockard, Mackenzie Mormon, Caitlin Rank, Lindsey Silvers, Sarah Smith, Natalie, Natalie, I think it's pretty long. And Zora Watkins. And so, earned a gold rating in Group One, will be attending state. And so, these are large ensemble, Adams Ensemble, several of those, and also the Ingle Ensemble. And we had several that earned a silver. And then we had a perfect score by Ms. Watkins for getting a perfect score on her vocal solo this afternoon. And it is very hard to get a perfect in those. And she'll be moving on then to state next week at Perry Meridian. On Friday, February, oh, that's yours. And one more for Southwood before we go to Mr. Miller. Southwood was represented by Sarah Smith, Lindsey Silvers, and Caitlin Rank at Saturday's ISMA Vocal State Concert, Ensemble Contest at Perry Meridian High School. All three girls did an outstanding job of their respective solos, and they earned a rating of either gold or gold with distinction. So awesome job there. Metro North Elementary, on February 11th, we had the second Metro North Valentine's Day VIP breakfast. We had over 525 guests, enjoyed delicious breakfast with their Valentine's. Breakfast was prepared by amazing Metro North cafeteria staff and our Metro North teachers' help with serving and hosting. Thank you to all who helped make this morning so memorable for all of our families. Also, after final round of judging, four of the six Metro North finalists have been awarded the Gold Ribbon Award for their symphony in color artwork. This is the highest honor given, and only 36 gold ribbons were awarded from all of the statewide submissions. Congratulations to Millie Siders, Ava Mills, Faith Greer, and Heather Zwiebel. In addition to Metro North and Sharp Creek students receiving these accolades for their artwork, Mrs. Katie Gray, our Metro North and Sharp Creek art teacher, will receive another award. This award is presented every year to an art teacher with the most students receiving gold ribbon awards. So that's quite an honor. Mrs. Gray has 10 students receiving this distinction. I should also note that she submitted 12 pieces of student artwork. Congratulations to Mrs. Gray. Also, Metro North Robotics Team had their last regular competition of season on Saturday, and they were amazing. It was a long day at matches, but in the end, we made it into the finals and placed fifth in a field of 48 teams. Our second graders were competing with other teams that may have sixth grade students, proving that Metro North team can definitely hold their own. The team also received a Think Award, a special recognition from judges that applauds our team's ability to write code, problem solve, work flexibility, and collaborate. So congratulations to all of those. From Sharp Creek, they want to celebrate students in different, Ms. Hughes, Adeline Hawkins, Ms. Black, Ms. Leonard, and Turner, and Tika Baird, being selected on the 2022 Symphony in Color Contest School finalist. These six students were also named expedition finalists, which means that they're in the top 100 statewide. And to top this off, all six Sharp Creek students have earned a gold ribbon award for their artwork. This is the highest of honors for this contest, is awarded to only 36 artworks in the state of Indiana. So congratulations to them. And again, Katie Gray, Sharp Creek raised $2,026 for the Leader Dog fundraiser in the Urbana Lions Club, and adding 500 to that, so the total raised was... It doesn't add up. So it might be 2,526, but it says on here 2,026. Sharp Creek will be sponsoring three Leader Dog, Dog puppies, Lucky, Snickers, and Jax. Mrs. Riggles' class raised the most money, and they received a ice cream party provided by the Lions Club. Mrs. Brown's, Mr. Brown's class came in second, Mrs. Ross came in third. The K kids would like to thank the entire school community for supporting this fundraiser. Sharp Creek would also like to congratulate all of the robotics for the recent strong showings. Sharp Creek hosted the Wabash County London Finals on February 11th. The blue Norse box Team A, as Southwood Circuit Knights placed first in the teamwork challenge. Additionally, the Norse box A won the skills award. Norse box, white, gray, and black, all placed in the top four in skills. And so, on February 12th, they competed in the Cinnawal, and they also did very well there, too. And I believe Mr. Snyder is up.
All right, so Friday, February 11th, so it's been a couple of weeks ago, at the Bluffton game, the NHS boys received an exemplary behavior report from, your name's over it, so I can't see it.
Is it better?
Anyway, from an official, Beecham. Reported the team, including all players and coaching staff, showed tremendous sportsmanship the entire game. Even after being called for violations, they would run over and hand the ball to the official. They were helping opponents up off the floor, very respectful. You could tell that everyone has bought in, as it was through and through the entire team. Hopefully, the fans will see what the kids and coaching staff are doing, which, in light of recent events Sunday, I mean, they're seeing on the news, you know, coaches smacking other people and starting brawls. And, you know, Northfield hasn't had the most successful season, we're in transition, we're getting better. The kids are playing hard, working hard for their coach, doing a great job. That's good to hear, because it's harder to have good sportsmanship when you've had a rougher season than it is when you're winning all the time. And so I think in light of recent events, that's even more kudos to the high school kids for showing the college coaches and players how to act after games and during games. From Mr. Johnston, the choir teacher, he had choir students participate in the ISMA District Solo and Ensemble Contest on Saturday, February 12th, at Carroll High School in Fort Wayne. They earned three gold ratings, four silver ratings. Seventh graders Emma Wilson, Trinity Thor, and Landon Mast all participated. Landon received a perfect score. Acapella choir members, Kayden Cruz, Anna Hodson, and Addie France sang an ensemble. Addie France sang a solo, earning a gold rating to advance to the state contest held on Saturday, February 19th. Congratulations to all of them. We also had the Northfield students make the Wabash County Honors Band and Choir. They'll be playing at Ford Theater on March 11th with all the other Wabash County schools. Those band members are Landon Shue, Claire Thompson, Haley Barton, Turner Stevens, Isaiah Beal, Madison Griffin, Alexis Lovell, John Nussler, Kyle Nguyen, and Natalie Keller. We also have the Honor Choir students, joining them, Kayden Cruz, Anna Hodson, Addie France, and Jasmine Kelly. And then we had the art teacher enter some Northfield students into the Huntington University Art Show, and they had a high school exhibit there. And a lot of this stuff has been posted on our school Facebook, too. So Asia Miller got honorable mention for her sculpture Break Free. Good job, Asia, who happens to be here. And Kenya Barris had photography, Ethan Sloan, photography, Jessica Ray, mixed media, Emma Bone, drawing, Avery Napier, drawing, Lane Denton, ceramics, May Napier, and J.C. Crump also did ceramics. And then I also wanted to say congratulations to Hannah Holmes and Emily Pennington. They made the conference, all-conference team, Ainsley Dale Honorable Mention for girls' basketball this year. So, a lot of stuff wrapping up and finishing up over the winter. Sorry if I left anything out, try to hit it all here.
You did a good job.
Asia, I thought I put you down since you're here.
Who else? Thank you. So next, we're going to go to the school resource officer, spotlight. And not necessarily just because of school resource officer, but because of the spotlighting. And so, if I could have Asia and Officer Kirkland that come up here, because you will be on Facebook Live, so have a scan about her either, right there. Don't, people will get you all, I'll get out of the picture. So, anyway, every month, or every school board meeting, we do this. And this, this time, we actually had Asia Miller, who is a, what year are you in now? Junior at Northfield Junior Senior High School, who nominated Officer Kirkland. And also, we had someone else, another staff member, and I'll read that after Asia kind of talks about why you nominated Officer Kirkland. So, you're on the board, you got it.
Okay, so I nominated Officer Kirkland because I felt like he deserved the spot the most, because he just fits the spot at Northfield as a resource officer the best, because he acts like a child half the time.
That's not what it says here.
So it fits him with, so he fits him with like the rest of the students. And then, and he just like makes every student act like a human, like treats him like a human. And he just makes the school better, because he brings out everybody's true personalities, and he just is amazing.
Thank you, very good. And I will say then, so Amy Powell, who is one of our bus drivers, and she is also one of our parent professionals at Northfield, and she also nominated Eric Kirkland. And so, I will read what she has to say. She said she was not able to come tonight because she has, one of her children has an advanced. Says, "SR Kirkland does so much extra work. He constantly helps bus drivers, making kids smile in the hallways, and he's underappreciated for sure. He has worked extra helping with safety measures and making sure kids get to class on time. He has formed wonderful relationships with students across the schools that I hope will never be forgotten. He is a great listener and always there right when you need him. He has helped so many of my students, I am very thankful for him." So, on behalf of MSD of Wabash, and also our sponsor, First Farmer Banking Trust, let's give Officer Kirkland a round of applause. Why didn't you just hand that to me?
There you go.
And then, because I don't want to get in the picture. There we go.
There you go.
Got it. Are you got it already?
Yeah.
So, we've asked everybody, we've asked everybody to go ahead and read the card first. So, read the card.
Okay. Says, "Congratulations, because you have dreamed big and worked hard, we figured you might like a soft place to rest. Thank you for doing what you do so well." The staff's spotlight.
What is in there, then?
It is a silky smooth, meaty touch, luxurious blanket.
We've never had anybody read that yet, so.
I'm like, well, I'm not just gonna say it's a blanket, I don't know.
I think it might have something on there about...
Oh, yeah, it says, "Dream big, work hard, MSD of Wabash County."
Yeah.
Stank thumbs up.
So, of course, this doesn't, you don't use that during the school day, though. We're gonna make sure.
Well, you know, sometimes you get a little tired.
All right, so Asia, thank you very much for nominating him, and thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. And let's give him a round of applause, thank you very much. And like I put in the email, you are welcome to stay, or you may leave.
We probably expected one for supper.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think that concludes the public recognition, so we're going to move on to public comment for agenda items only. We'll give a minute or so, that, a minute, a lot of Facebook, five, catch up, see if anybody's coming there.
There are a couple of comments. I think it's from Amber Brettsman. She wanted to add, "Sharp Creek Robotics, good news that Team A and Team D won automatic state bids." And so, Team D won Excellence Award, which is the highest award you can give a team, and Team B won a Design Award for their engineering notebook. Team A is currently ranked 14th in the state out of 553 teams. And she's afraid she might have left that off what she sent to Mr. Martin, so that might be why she had to share that. Well, so Mrs. Brettsman, that's one, it's one you don't, he has it on here, and now that I see that, it's a fun fact that she said. So I appreciate her saying all that, because that's something I probably should have highlighted with the other things. There was just a lot of information on that little box. When we do it in Excel, it's a little harder to read all that, scroll back and forth, so. And she also wanted to thank Southwood Elementary for hosting the league this year. She knows how much work it was setting up and tearing down, and she appreciated the artwork of Erica Tyson and Amy Schmidt.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Need approval of the minutes from our last board meeting of February 8th.
Who?
Okay. Motion to second to approve the minutes from our last meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most claims. I would accept claims.
Second.
Motion in seconds for approved claims, all in favor, say aye. Payroll.
Nothing new on payroll. Probably see anticipated increases, just with the winter sports claims coming in as the season ends.
Motion to approve the payment.
Sir?
Motion in seconds to approve payroll, all in favor, say aye. My initial summary.
So, I gave you a first forecast of what the education fund and operations funds cash flow could possibly look like throughout the year. And obviously, this is something that ebbs and flows each month as things change and come out. And so, the education fund for 2022 currently shows the expenses reflected at, with the estimated cost based off of trends and current teacher contract obligations. It does not reflect any potential wage increase at this time. It also reflects revenue that's estimated based off of past trends. And it also does reflect the basic grant revenue, showing September 2021 ADM counts and December special ed counts throughout the entire year. We just recently had an ADM count for February, so that money is not reflected in this, at this point in time, as well as any July estimates that we have to provide to the state that they base our last six months of funding off of. And then, which would also lead to the September actual ADM counts for that year as well. So it's pretty vanilla at this time, as far as the cash flow is concerned, and represents, like I said, basic trends from previous years with that. And then, for the operations fund, you're looking at similar type of information. It does not base off of any potential wage increases for expenses at this point in time this year. We are actually looking at wage increases when it comes to things that might come out of the operations fund for our classified and administrative staffs. And then, like I said, most of the other expenses and revenue are just based off of past trends.
Will the state of justice, anyone, update the PDM?
They do. They do not do that until, I believe, April, May, and June. I think those are the three months that they reconcile the count from February. So that's why it's not reflected currently.
Were they gonna do away with that sometime, or are we gonna continue to do that?
The second count?
Yeah, the second count, yes. At one point, it used to be two counts, and it was one count, and then it went back to two counts. And there's not been any talk or even legislation about changing.
Okay, and there's been two counts for quite a while, but at first, they were just seeing what the counts were, but it wasn't, money wasn't tied to it. And then, they went to it, and then they took it away, and that was legislated back to you, so, okay.
Chris, there's pretty decent growth in this operations fund projection. Do you see anything where we would be changing the transfer into the education fund, then, to change in that percent? I just wonder.
So, as, so, there could be room to change that percentage. And what I mean by that is, the percentage could possibly go lower from that standpoint. The, the increases that we're starting to see now are because we paid off that self-insurance fund. So our transfers are no longer like as large as what they were in the past. So that now has freed up our operations fund for more operational type expenses.
And we had to introduce savings.
That came off a while ago. So, in reality, this can help us continue to do things with our buildings and maintain some of those areas that maybe have been deferred, because there wasn't the availability to do that. We were always doing Matthew bonds.
The bonds have dealt this one, too, though, because of capital project.
Because we've been taking, we've been taking those costs out of the bonds. But eventually, some of those are gonna have to go back into the operations fund.
No, it's good.
That's all I really had with that. Somebody jinxed us, though, I think, maybe a few board meetings ago, saying that we didn't have to worry about any snow removal. I think that might have been Kevin. And that seems like all we've been doing here lately, so.
I hope you're here this week.
Yeah, I don't want to have the snow anymore, but.
Right.
Expensive.
Make you bring a truck around for free.
Yeah.
Be ready Thursday night, Friday morning.
We'll move on to personnel. Under resignation, we have Nicole Powell, her professional at Metro North Elementary, and Wendy Lynn, bus driver for the more, and Callie Baker, social worker for Sharp Creek Elementary. Under employment, we have Tim Smith, custodian at Sharp Creek Elementary. And for Northfield spring coaches, we have the following. Kyle France head softball, Jeff Crumb, volunteer softball, Nicholas Scovatti, volunteer softball, Matt Schreier, volunteer softball. Tori Schaefer head baseball, Stan Cox, assistant baseball, Greg Tomlinson, Brad Moon, Rippling here, Matt Burkhardt, Joseph Mitchell, all assistant baseball. Heather Hayden head track, Scott Hawke, volunteer track, Krista Hoover, assistant track, Larry Vaughn, assistant track, Dick Clemente, assistant track. Colin Dawes head boys golf, Anthony Sorger, head junior high golf, Marion Mylum head tennis, and Casey Dyson, assistant tennis. Southwood spring coaches, Steve Swinson head baseball, Corey Blocker, Dan Lloyd, Christian Dieter, all... No, Corey Blocker and Dan Lloyd, assistant baseball, Christian Dieter is the JV baseball coach. Gary Dale head golf, Carl Pace head softball, Chad Lambert, Gary Marion, Tabitha Klein, all assistant softball. Cynthia Bell head tennis, Taylor Legg, assistant tennis. Tanya Boone head track, Jeff Fennickel and Kerry Hamel, assistant track, Jeff Hobson, junior high track, Daniel Vosis, junior high track, Natalie Under, junior high track, and Devon Dale, assistant golf. That is the entire staff and personnel.
I'm looking for junior high track, if anybody's interested. I moved to the slate.
Sir?
Motion in seconds to approve personnel, all in favor, say aye. Hartland Careers, I'll report on that.
We had a meeting last week, they had a little bit of an update on the EDA grant. They're still trying to work out the concerns with the higher-ups in Chicago and stuff like that. And so, there's no real news on that, except that Perkins Assessment Grant of $7,600, and that's just to help, they get that every year. Mr. Hobson reported there were 67 positive students from the beginning of the year COVID, and that's it. And then, Hartland Careers Center scholarships, they give out, you know, from the rental money, and they give out, I think, a thousand dollars, so it'll be like eight of them. So, they want to make sure that the counselors, guidance counselors have all that information. Because there was two or three from last year that are not going to be awarded, because they ended up, they got awarded, but they didn't go to school, didn't take their, so. Instead of being 8,000, it's gonna be like 11,000 this year, something like that, so. Put that in front of the guidance counselors, and have those kids.
Yeah, we got emails, and they've...
Yeah, I'll let them know. And that's it.
Superintendent, report.
Yeah, I just want to mention, my computer's, I'm excited. Want to mention that our ADM, Dr. Kuhn did mention about that, so we did have that certified, and we have great news that our total ADM, we increased 74 students, and that's great. A lot of schools don't necessarily increase from fall to spring. And also then, just to give you a little bit more data, from spring 2021 to spring 2022, we are up 24 and a half. So not only did we increase from fall to spring, we still increased 24.5 from last spring to this spring. So that's very good news. That's what I had as far as that goes.
Jericho, report.
Yeah, I shared with you guys an NWA report. It looked at, yeah, there we go. It looks at kids' test scores from winter of '21 through winter of '22. And so, this data is actually specific to the kids that took the test. And so, all the kids that we had in 2022, it only takes their data and compares it to the ones in '21. So somebody came or gone, they aren't included on that. And it's always nice to look at some of the highlights there. So, 174 students during that year grew at 90th percentile as across the whole entire country. And so, we're all about growth, we feel like that's the best thing we can focus on. When a kid comes in, we meet them where they're at and help them grow. And so, that's about 26%, 27% of our kids grew on either test, reading or math. And then of those, then the 31, this is even more shocking. So these kids grew at the 90th percentile, but then they also scored at the 90th percentile. So these are your high-flying, high-achieving kids that still grew compared to other students that scored that high. And so, just thoughts to celebrate there. I might pause, are there any questions at all, kind of makes sense? And this is NWA data, so we get it back very quickly once we take it, pretty reliable. Everybody feels pretty comfortable with it. And so then, underneath that, I try to find classes that do well. And so, you can see the school and the grade level. And so, the entire 6th grade at Sharp Creek, from last year to this year, those kids, it's 5th graders to 6th... And so the entire sixth grade at Sharp Creek from last year to this year, those kids as fifth graders to sixth graders, grew, uh, the 90th percentile compared to other fifth and sixth graders across the country. And so just some really exciting things down there, and as you scroll down, the reading there in third and fourth grade, lots of growth. And so lots of things to celebrate. Underneath that, of course, there's always things to be concerned about. And we are seeing some issues of reading growth in our primary levels, primary BK 1, 2, 3. And so, uh, we are addressing that, um, working with teachers and principals. And it's not, it's not dramatic, and it's not scary, but it's just enough to let us know that we've got our work, there's, there's an area that needs some attention. And so one of the strategies we'll use to help support that is, uh, I'm sure Dr. Kuhn or Mrs. Boone, somebody will bring up summer school, I might be speaking ahead of my turn here, but we're gonna offer summer school again for K 1, 2, 3 kids, just like they did last year. It was kind of, uh, Mrs. Moore coined the great phrase, it was summer school on steroids. Um, and we're gonna do that again, we'll use S dollars to set aside, to pay teachers to come in, to work with their classes. And we feel like just that extra four or five weeks with those, uh, kids will make a big difference. And so, um, so yeah, yeah, that's the latest update. I don't usually get to share that, so I'm glad I got this.
You find this a lot more reliable than like the I-Step?
Yeah, it's just consistent, right? NWA's been doing this for, probably since Mr. Keefable was in school.
Wow.
Okay, maybe not that long. No, it's been around for forever, and, uh, and it's got a huge, a number of participants. I mean, they test across the country, it's consistent, and so, yeah, we do find that very reliable. It's unfortunate it doesn't meet some kind of federal requirements to be a part of the testing, or at least that's how the department interprets it, so otherwise, we'd use that instead of I-Learn. Um, and I-Learn might be good, but we're only in our second year of it, right? And so there's just so much to work out, whereas NWA's been there and done that. This is a formative assessment where you actually can form the instruction, whereas the summative at the end of the year is after, over, those kids are going to another class and, and all those different things. So, um, most schools would say that they would rather have this as their state assessment.
Then it turns over quick, too. You don't wait six months.
Yeah, yeah, getting it back, so I told you, we'd have the data there that says that. And so we're already able to address that now while they're with us, rather than next year or whenever.
So when you took that test, was that the feather pad and the heat wall?
It's actually like a stone tack.
I was trying to make it a little younger. All right, we'll move on to new business. Out of nude business, we have a recommendation to approve the continuation of using the Food to School Purchasing Cooperative for 2022, 2023.
Yeah, so this is an annual renewal, um, just based off of when they have their, um, meetings and determine which, uh, procurement vendors and things like that, that they're going to select and then allow us to select, um, to be a part of that. So we've been a part of this group since 2019. It's done well for us. Uh, we would like to continue, um, to use the co-op for our purchasing procurement for, uh, MSD for the 2022, 2023 school year. Move to continue on with the cooperative.
Motion and second to approve continuation of using the Food to School Purchasing Co-op for next school year, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now we have the recommendation to approve the second update to the reentry plan and supplement 2021, 2022 regarding contact tracing and quarantine. Mr. Keefable, I'll speak to that.
Yes, so first of all, we did have a reentry plan that we started out with. Then we had a supplement to the reentry plan. Then we had an update to both of those. And so that's why this is called the second update to the reentry plan and supplement for 2020, 21, 2020, 2022. Can't say that very well right now. So contact tracing and quarantine. So as it mentioned here, um, the Indiana State Department of Health no longer recommends contact tracing and quarantine in schools effective tomorrow. Uh, so it was perfect timing for us to have a board meeting on 2/22/22. I'd have to say that, that's kind of fun. With this recommendation, MSD of Walbees County will no longer contract trace or quarantine closed contacts beginning on February 23rd, 2022, if you approve this. Schools do not need to rec, report any COVID-19 cases information to the IDOH. School dashboard will be discontinued, because that's what we've been doing all the time, for a long, long time. So I'm not gonna read the next part, but if individual tests positive, it's no different than what you had before. But we want to reiterate that that's still happening. If they are test positive, they need to quarantine for five days. They can come back to school with a mask for days six and 10, as long as, um, their symptoms have subsided. And so, and they've been fever-free for 24 hours with, uh, no medication, uh, or fever-reducing medication. So with all other illnesses, students should not return to school unless they are fever-free for at least 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medication, and their symptoms are resolved. So I would like to recommend this and hope that you would follow suit with that.
I'll move to approve. Oh, sorry. Motion and second to approve the second update to reentry plan and supplement, taking away the requirement for contact tracing and quarantine of asymptomatic people. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're still gonna go ahead and just cop that up. Uh, under unfinished business, we have nothing, board policy, nothing, public comment on anything. So give them time to cop, uh, come up. Public comment there. And any items from board members? Okay, we're done.